Are you ready to? Okay. Good evening, everybody. Town of Log Lane Village Agenda Regular Meeting Board of Trustees, November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The time is six thirty-eight P M. Two oh two Birch Street, Log Lane Village, Colorado, eight oh seven oh five. Pursuant to C R S twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, Section four B, an executive session for the purpose of conferencing with an attorney for the local public body, for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions pertaining to any item listed on the agenda herein and/or any related discussion that may arise thereto. Such executive session may be entered into at any time or at any point on the agenda if necessary and with the requisite counsel approval. Regular meeting. Comments from the public are welcome at the beginning of each meeting. Comments that are no longer than five minutes will be heard following the presentation of staff or the petitioner. Please wait until the mayor recognizes you. State your name and address for the record. Public comment and citizens' concerns, the Board of Trustees will make no decision, nor will they take any, take action except to direct their appropriate town employee. Roll call.
Naomi.
Here.
Deli.
Here.
Melissa.
Here.
Cajun.
Here.
Josie.
Here.
Robin.
Here.
Angie.
Here.
E D. Oh, wait, just kidding.
Yeah. Oh. Good, okay. Citizens' complaints. We do have one complaint and one suggestions. The com, well, I should, it does, it's not circled complaint, but I'll go ahead and read it. It's dated November seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. From Rosa Beltran. Uh, address is one oh eight Fur Drive. And it reads, "On November sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, I reported the officer, to Officer Malave, that my thirteen-year-old daughter ran away. I was told to wait until eleven P M. to call in and make a missing persons report. This was around six thirty P M. My daughter is thirteen years old. I called back at eleven twenty-one to report her missing. Officer Sierra then arrived to my home to take the report." Officer Sierra then arrived to my, okay, I read that one. "I expressed that she could be in danger and under the influence of something. I told her I was looking for her and he stated, 'Let me know if you find her so I can cancel this report.'" Is a thirteen-year-old missing or runaway not important? He didn't ask for names, addresses of where she might be. This morning, I headed to Morgan County Sheriff's Office, excuse me, and they told me Officer Sierra, Sierra told them he had taken the report to the jail, which was a lie. I called him, letting him know, letting him. I'm not sure. I called him.
I think it's supposed to say, letting him know I was.
Okay, letting him know I was suspicious of her friends', parents', harboring her. He told me, "Have you checked her school?" Isn't this what he is supposed to be helping with? And again, he told me, "Let me know if you find her so I can cancel this report." I spoke to that read in another?
An S R O.
An S R O officer, and he told me the report was never entered with the jail or dispatch. This town is known for its ineffectiveness in hiring
competent.
competent law enforcement.
So I do have paperwork here that shows that that was, the report was filed.
I was gonna say, doesn't it take like twenty-four hours?
All right, let's let Angie finish.
Um, but it's, um, after I, I did speak with, um, Rosa in regards to her, um, concern, she did call me that following day. Um, and, and then I spoke to Anthony. I feel that Anthony did what he could within his power. Um, I'm not a law enforcement officer. I don't know what the exact guidelines are, um, but they do have specific rules that they have to follow. Um, and he, this is, he did file the report. And thankfully, she did come back the next morning.
Okay.
So it's going to be see that, that, and you know, to C C I P and we, other one is the one that, when we begin to, um.
And this is the time, correct?
The time and everything there.
Okay.
And then information, you already had it, if I have to run it from the trial, so that's why you didn't ask for the child in the picture, okay?
Are you Rosa?
Yes.
Would you like to, okay, may you approach, you can approach the podium.
Um, I, I did write another statement because I was, it was kind of rushed and, uh, when I came over to file a complaint, so this is what I, if I read.
So this isn't the one that you wanted us to read?
Yeah, it was along the lines of that.
Okay.
It was just very rushed.
Yeah, you can go ahead and read that, and then if you wouldn't mind leaving that with us.
Okay. So it's on my phone, so.
Oh, okay, we'll give you that.
On November sixth, my thirteen-year-old daughter ran away. It was dark, she's a minor, and the surrounding area has no drug activity. When I spoke to Officer Malave, he's, he seemed to show an urgency. Instead of acting, he told me, "Give it a few hours and call back." And, um, he made some inappropriate comments referring to nearby residences' crackheads when I mentioned the drug users nervously. That was unprofessional, disrespectful, and kind of dehumanizing. Those individuals are still people, and that is not how I expect any law office, or like any law enforcement officer to carry themselves. When Officer Sierra arrived around midnight, he took the report, taking my daughter's details, but again, he offered no real assistance. He didn't ask for names of friends, possible locations, or anywhere that she might have gone. His focus was not on finding my daughter. He told me, "Let me know if you can find her so I can cancel that report." Hearing that during a missing child situation was not acceptable to me. Hours later, after soon some communication with the sheriff's office, he suggested I check the school myself and did not take any basic investigative steps. And again, he told me, "Let me know if you can find her so I can cancel this report." At that point, I felt like involving the police only slowed me down because I was the one doing the searching while they offered no solutions. I was not explaining the process. The C R O at the school told me that she was not entered in the system, and this was nine hours later. So he's the one that suggested that I reach out to the department and say that I demanded her be listed as a runaway. And then also from the principal, he told me about an hour after that, that they had contact with my daughter and that because she was not entered in the system, they let her go. So after nine, um, after nine hours, other, now my daughter was not entered into the system and from the school C R Os. But his response, Officer Sierra's response was that he had made a mistake in the report. So a partnering police department, um, was the one that gave me more information, and that put my daughter's safety at risk. And it is concerning that the department, um, that the Log Lane Police Department has this history of officers and internal issues. And I am here today because I believe the response my family received was dismissive and negligent. And I felt that it was not up to par from what I would expect from law enforcement in that moment.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming tonight and, um, reading that. Um, if you could, would it mind, like I said, also, um, giving us that in written form as well so that we can put it with us?
Uh, I can, I have, like, one of those.
Okay. That, that would be fine, too. Um, I'm sorry for what you endured, um, as a parent myself, so, um, we will, um, go ahead and speak with the liaison and with the department as well. Thank you. Um, I'm going to go ahead and read a suggestion dated November sixth, uh, two thousand and twenty-five, from Renee Coro. Uh, one twenty-one Main Street. The suggestion reads, "I would like to respectfully request that the Town of Log Lane Village consider grading or smoothing out the dirt alleyway located between Pine and Main Street. At present, there are several large ditches and uneven areas that make sections of the alley nearly inaccessible to cars and difficult to drive through safely. Addressing these issues would greatly improve access and safety for residents who rely on this alleyway. Thank you in advance." And, um, maintenance did get the alley graded, and that was done that same day that he provided the suggestion, so it is taken care of.
Mike? I don't have one of these. I can write one of these.
So let me go ahead. That is all I have right now. So we need a public hearing. Hearing for the deliber, deliberation on the proposed two thousand and twenty-six town budget. Citizens may comment on the budget that has been submitted at this time. Is there any citizens here tonight, too, that would like to comment on the budget? No? Okay. I'm moving on to the consent agenda. Line item one. We are missing something here. We did not stand for the pledge. Yes. That is what's missing, so, sorry. We could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, on to the consent agenda of line item one.
Mayor, I had a, I had a hand in redlining some of the agenda. I apologize if I somehow inadvertently took the.
No, that's okay. Uh, we caught it.
You did, yeah, well done.
Um, line item one, approval of October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, regular meeting minutes. Line item two, approval of October sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, special meeting minutes. Line item three, approval of October eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, special meeting minutes. Line item four, approval of October ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, special meeting minutes. Line item five, approval of October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, special meeting minutes. Line item six, approval of October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five, special meeting minutes. Line item seven, approval of November tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, special meeting minutes. Line item eight, approval of payments from October first through October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. And line item nine, approval of payments made for November first through the fifteenth. On page two, line, line item thirty-five forty-eight, utility associates. What exactly was that amount? It's nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Page two, under small equipment. Thirty-five forty-eight. I'm assuming that that's something for the police department? No?
Yeah, but.
I don't remember.
It is for the police department, but. I'm not really sure what. Well, um. Radios. For Pedro's car. That was for all the, the radio equipment. Okay. We, we figured it out.
Is there maybe a mistake where you're under there for twice for the pay? On eleven one through eleven eighteen?
It's, uh, previous day.
Well, I was seeing the, it says eleven, I mean, through March twentieth, but she gets.
It's that day.
Oh, from, from, everybody, okay.
From missing dates.
For missing dates, okay.
I swear.
And the grant expenses for Edward?
That was for the.
That was for that.
Right, but I thought that comes from a different, that comes just from.
It's still, there was a check written, it's still.
That I have to show, okay.
It ends up being one of those zeroed out things, in and out type situations. Yeah, it was crazy. Walmart wouldn't help us at all, wouldn't help me and Deb at all, and Edward was just like, "Yeah, we'll take your eight grand, we don't care."
Does anybody have any questions for the consent agenda? Or still need a little bit more time? No? Good. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Naomi.
Yes.
Deli.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Cajun.
Yes. Josie. Yes.
Robin.
Yes.
Angie. Yes.
Okay, on to the reports. Um, for the mayor's report. Looks like every, the trunk or treat was a success. Every, I heard everybody had a good time. Um, had a good participation from the community as well as, uh, the Board of Trustees. And I'd just like to thank everybody who was involved and participated that day to make it be a success and as enjoyable, um, for the kids. I'm thinking, um, I know it's really hard to plan for the future, but, um, maybe next year we could do something a little bit different, just to change it up, you know, try something new. Um, but I think it worked out great with Fort Morgan and, um, their, uh, trick-or-treat trail that they do on Main Street. So I didn't get anybody, um, complaining, but I would like to try some, um, more activities that would get the kids to, um, maybe some games or something for them to do.
Especially if it's as nice as it was this year, it was.
That's what I mean.
Kinda, yeah, iffy.
It was hit or miss.
Kinda nice this year.
And then, um, we are starting our planning for our Christmas event that's coming up as well and getting the girls together to look over the list and gather that. If you guys know of, um, kids who you think maybe, you know, just getting the word out there to do that, but, um, I think later tonight, we're gonna figure out if we're, we're gonna decide if we wanna.
December fifth is the cutoff?
Yes.
For signups?
Yes, so, and did you have something?
No.
Oh. You're looking at me, I'm like, is there something? Um, other than that, that's, I think we're gonna have our hands full pretty much with the planning of all of that, so try our best to have all hands on deck so that we can have a successful Christmas with the kids and the families that live out here. Uh, that is all that I have as of right now. If Josie, you can give us the Conservation Trust report.
Conservation Trust report as of November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, our beginning balance as of ten oh one, twenty twenty-five, with thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars with forty-seven cents. Having one credit of three dollars and forty-seven cents, euro debit, and our ending balance was thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars with ninety-four cents.
Okay. Treasurers' report.
Uh, Treasurer's report, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, uh, in the general fund, beginning balance October third, two thousand and twenty-five, three hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars with forty-nine cents, with credits at seventy-nine, for a total of one twenty-nine, or one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-six, with sixty-four cents. The debit's at ninety, at one hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and nineteen, with eleven cents. Our ending balance as of October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, is three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-one, with two cents. Bank of Colorado savings as of November third, two thousand and twenty-five, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine, with sixty-nine cents. New Water Enterprises account as of August thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, nineteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine, with fifty cents. In the Colorado Trust balance as of October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, sixty thousand, four hundred and fifty-two, with thirty cents. In the Express Deposits Account as of October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight, with kind of three cents.
Public Works, Mike?
I have anything to report, ma'am.
And Public Safety? Do you have anything?
We may have some busy, couple of salt and domestics. And we got a couple of disturbance, especially in the twenty-five.
Okay. Uh, we do have our attorney, Dan, here tonight. Dan, do you have anything that you'd like to report?
Uh, no, not necessarily. I think my main gist is related to your item number one in new business, so call her if you've got any questions when we get to that.
Okay. So on to new business. Line item one, approve, disapprove table, the agreement regarding town rights related to properties subject to sale.
Have we heard anything back from the people on, the lawyer on top there? Have you heard anything from the other side yet?
I did not get a single response. I know I, we sent it yesterday, I didn't get a single response to that original email from two or three weeks ago. Obviously, there was kind of a mistaken email and some clarification with Clayton Holmes to get the right one in place, so I know that there, it's not like it's completely off the radar, but I have not had any substantive discussions. And, and I would say just the agreement in front of you has a whole lot of permutations that kind of depend on their deal and then also what they're willing to agree to or not agree to. I don't think there's much for you guys to do with this. I would probably say table it, but to the extent anyone might know that tabling it causes problems for the transaction, I would say you could kind of give me authority to continue to negotiate, but just, you know, we're not gonna go below that dollar amount that's already offered, and we don't care who pays us, but one of the two sides has to make us whole. Like, I can, I can operate under that kind of guidance. Um, but again, I don't know that there's a whole lot of things to guess at without having any back and forth with, with them. And I suspect they are debating it with each other at the moment, so it doesn't surprise me that we haven't heard, but I just, I'm guessing.
Well, I can reach out to, um, Mike tomorrow and just see if they've even begun any discussions. I mean, I'm comfortable with Dan taking over. I think he knows where we stand and what our, our hope and expectation is.
Yeah, and I kind of put a bunch of placeholders in there, right? I don't know the answer. I don't really care on the answer, obviously. The one answer I might say, I don't, I wouldn't recommend that, and a different answer, I'd say, oh, that's a, a great option, you guys should put that in there and agree to it. But it's speculation at this point, but I do think those placeholder points, I feel comfortable if you're having discussions with people, just sort of figuring out what, what makes sense where.
I too agree with Angie, so.
Good, yeah.
We can do that.
So, Dan, if you're okay, um, kind of taking it from here, then I'll reach out to, um, Mike.
Mike.
Mike, tomorrow, and let him know that, um, you know, whatever offer or contingencies or whatever can go through you. That way, they have a direct line.
Perfect, yep, I'll be on standby.
Sounds good, thank you. If I can get a motion.
Table.
No. No, we want to approve.
Do we want to table this or just reword it to where we're giving you the authority to?
Reword it.
Carry it, carry out the contract for us?
I think we worded.
Oh, you think we lost you, Dan?
I, I muted my source. Um, yeah, I'd say go ahead and make a motion to approve sort of the general framework set forth in this agreement with instructions to me to bring it back to you should anything change materially or to, you know, if the price is lessened or something where, you know, but, sorry, I should give you a better motion. Um, just a motion to approve this general framework and instructions to me to bring it back if anything changes substantially.
I'll make a motion to approve, um, the agreement, um, framework regarding town rights related to property subject to sale, um, with, uh, Town Attorney Dan, um, bringing that back to us for a final approval.
And I'll second.
Roll call.
Naomi.
Yes.
Deli.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Cajun.
Yes.
Josie.
Yes.
Robin.
Yes.
Angie. Yes.
Okay. Line item two, approved, disapproved table, resolution number two thousand and twenty-five dash zero two, a resolution of the Board of Trustees of Log Lane Village, Colorado. Okay, line item two, approved disapproved table resolution number twenty twenty five dash zero two, a resolution of the Board of Trustees of Log Lane Village, Colorado. Assessing the cost of nuisance abatement. Resolution number twenty twenty five dash zero two, a resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Log Lane Village, Colorado, assessing the cost of nuisance abatement.
Yeah, just a little bit of context here. I, I don't wanna quite call this housekeeping, um, but this is more of a procedural step that's necessary to kinda continue. Seeking to recoup those costs. So, you've already kind of heard this issue and made motions and taken action. In support of this, but we're just making sure we've got a solid record.
You guys have any questions?
I don't.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty five dash zero two, a resolution of the Board of Trustees of Log Lane Village, Colorado. Assessing the cost of nuisance abatement.
I'll second.
Naomi?
Yes.
Deli?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Cajun?
Yes.
Josie?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Line items. Three, approved disapproved table Clayton Homes sign permit for four by four signs at one twenty five birch and two twenty crest.
I'll make a motion to approve Clayton Homes sign permit for four by four sign at one twenty five birch and two twenty crest.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Naomi?
Yes.
Deli?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Yes. Josie?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Okay, line item four.
All right, just on that last one, I don't need to interrupt, but, or, I do, but.
On the, on the signs?
Yeah, is it a model home sign or a construction sign or was that?
For sale.
Okay, I just, if you guys may remember that you recently um, passed a new ordinance for your temporary signs, I would just. I don't see anything about a four by four sign that runs afoul of that, but just check when they put it up, that it's a, you know, the right setback and all that kinda stuff. Just wanted to add for you.
All right, thank you. Um, line item four, approve disapprove table cadet advance for fuel for driving to school.
I'll make a motion to approve cadet advance for fuel for driving to school.
I'll second.
Naomi?
Yes.
Deli?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Cajun?
Yes.
Josie?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Line item five, approve disapprove. Resolution number twenty twenty five dash zero three, a resolution adopting a budget for the Town of Log Lane Village, Colorado, for the calendar year beginning on the first day of January twenty twenty six. And ending on the last day of December twenty twenty six.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty five dash zero three, a resolution adopting a budget for the Town of Log Lane Village, Colorado, for the calendar year beginning on. The Thursday of January twenty twenty six and ending on the last day of December twenty twenty six.
I'll second. Naomi?
Yes.
Deli?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Cajun?
Yes.
Josie?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Line item six, discuss uh, quotes from Corin Maine and waterline for pipe replacement for next year. Do you have that?
What are, waterlines are we replacing?
Is that what you have, Mike?
No, we gotta go waterline.
Okay. Oh, okay, Corin Maine.
It's on branch alley, some of crest.
Oh, the streets, okay.
The streets for next spring.
Gotcha. Well, yeah, that would make sense. It's one of those spend it before you lose it things.
So we're just discussing that we're not.
Right, yes.
Yeah.
It's a lot. Does anybody have any questions for Mike? To discuss this um, proposal?
This is just pipes, right? Or is it fittings and everything?
Pipe fittings. Yeah. Uh, waterline, you'll see online eight, waterline should have their bid in, that's why I took, took a check email and they have not got people.
Okay.
Were they not supposed to have it yesterday or today?
Two days ago.
Apparently, they don't want to put a bid in.
Apparently, they don't want the job that bad if they can't get the quoting.
Normally, we went through Dana Kettenner and they got bought out through the fourth, that's why I got them. Corin Maine is the one we go through and do our meters with, that's why we stopped them.
I don't know, do you guys wanna table it or do you, and see if we can get another quote or do you wanna take this? Your post quote?
I mean, if we wait too long, we're gonna have our time getting pipe and it'll be more expensive.
Very true.
And you still got money in the budget this year.
What was that?
They wanted me to let you know, uh, the pipes would be cheaper this year than next year.
Cause everything will go up come January first.
And I think this is a really good price.
Yeah.
Yeah, that hundred and sixteen thousand ain't bad at all.
On here just to discuss.
No, but line seven.
Oh, I got you, sorry.
So I can, so if there's nothing else, I can go ahead and. Um, line, line item seven, approve disapproved table Corin Maine bid for waterline. Pipe in the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred and eighty three dollars and four cents.
I'll make a motion to approve Corin Maine bid for waterline pipe in the amount of one hundred sixteen thousand five hundred eighty three and four cents.
I'll second.
Roll call? Yes.
Deli?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Cajun?
Yes.
Josie?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Um, line item eight, we'll remove.
Take it out of there.
Yes. And line item nine. Approved disapproved table, the utility, utility bill in the amount of thirty thousand one hundred and fifty six dollars.
Pedro, did you ever get any response back from? So this is for cameras um, for Pedro's car, his new one, and then the two cars that we purchased from Hugo.
Why is it listed down on each other?
That was for the radio.
Cause it's.
Oh, I don't know why they, it's utility.
Because it's utility is the company.
Utility is the company, but they put it as utility bill. It should be the invoice.
Quote, it's not really the bill. Um, but this is for parts, labor, um, and. I did ask Pedro and he did reach out to um, the guy that put this quote together for us to see um, what the, you know. Labor ratio would be if we removed the cameras from the other vehicle, one of the other vehicles.
Ourselves.
No, if they were to remove them, I would not want to be responsible for taking those out.
I mean, having somebody removed.
Yeah, I mean, cause typically when you do a job like this, labor's gonna cost you more than material.
Exactly.
Um, so if they're removing from one car, putting it into another car, you're looking at double the labor.
Right.
Plus, Mike made a, a good point, um, you're gonna have wires get stretched out. Um, we don't know what's gonna go wrong in the removal process. Are you gonna cause another problem? You know, within the car that you're removing them from, um, making it, giving it more problems, you know, cause it's, the one car. With the most problems right now is gonna be our, eventually we will get all of that fixed, but it's gonna be our, our backup vehicle. Um, so we may be looking at this thirty thousand one hundred fifty six. I think if we try to remove. Um, a set of cameras from the, one of the older vehicles, I think we're gonna be looking at more money and labor.
It'll. But if we remove that, everything out of the backup. Then what good is the backup?
True.
And it could damage the equipment and stuff trying to remove it too, cause then you're just banging it around twice, taking it out here and banging it around over there, yeah.
So this is a very real quote right here.
Okay.
And are you looking for another quote?
And I don't think there's anybody.
Anyplace else that does?
See, oh, yeah, if, if, um, if there's a moment to, um, wiring and.
Yeah.
Parts and all that stuff, which I have, I have written down in my notes to, to do this.
But he's not having a whole lot to look at, he's like, oh, I'm back.
Well, I think we should table this then. And see exactly what it's gonna be.
Cause who's gonna install this stuff in the vehicles considering this company's out of Georgia, huh?
They, they themselves.
Oh, they send somebody out here to you? Oh, wow.
That's just where their main.
Main offices, okay.
They are in Georgia. They come from Atlanta.
But don't they have someone in Denver that does all this?
No, they got, came here, came from Atlanta.
Oh, my God.
Oh, Atlanta, cause this says, I was gonna say this says Decatur, but.
I mean, I'm okay tabling it, but we need to, we do need to get this done at some point, cause these other vehicles have to have cameras.
Well, with, with our, with the budget and work um, session being moved up for next month, I think we can do that and that gives you time.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll table it till next month.
So I'll make a motion to table um, the utility quote in the amount of thirty thousand one hundred fifty six dollars.
I'll second, oh, sorry.
December's meeting.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Naomi?
Yes.
Deli?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Cajun?
Yes.
Josie?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Okay, on to old business, discuss the Christmas party. Did you find out anything, Mike? Um. Regarding what we had, any ideas that we were doing? You didn't find out anything or no, there's a no?
No, I did not find out anything.
Okay. Anybody else brainstorm? I don't even think it's, I mean, it would be awesome if we could be on a fire truck, but.
I think it's looking more realistic to do our party.
I was gonna say, what if we set up the trailer and um, got the, put our stuff on the trailer and we could, we could do that.
I will help shop and I might help wrap, but I cannot get off and on a trailer. I can barely get out of my car on a good day.
If you sat there and you handed us the gifts.
Okay, I could probably do that.
Okay. Any thoughts?
But I don't know, I mean, you know, we're spending so much money with, on these kids and stuff. That is, I kinda look at it this way, is we spend this money, we go shopping, we wrap these presents, we bring them down here, the least the parents can do. Is bringing their kids down to the building to pick up their presents.
But at the same time, it's a different experience as well, you know? You gotta. I, I mean, we're still keeping our traditional, let's give to our community, you know, but at the same time, we're.
No, I know, my, my grandparents had a, when we were kids, and it was a lot of fun, my grandparents, um, back in Wheat Ridge in the day. You could like rent the firefighters to bring the truck and they would bring candy and presents and stuff like that. My dad's parents, my grandparents did that and we thought it was really cool.
But it's just gonna be us.
You have ready a tractor sits in the shop and got the trailer back there, I can put a bell to hay on it and throw gifts on it and you guys go down the rest of them, you cannot forget.
So my only problem with that is in the office, they were instructed to let everybody know, if you can't make it to the party, you can't sign your kids up. So if we're driving around on the streets handing out presents to kids. Um, how many parents are we gonna have that come back and say, well, they told me I couldn't sign my kids up, cause I couldn't make it down to the party?
Well, I'm sure it wouldn't take much to post it on Facebook for us that we're changing our.
And the flowers.
Our, um, Christmas party that we're not doing it in-house. And that was part, partially part of the reason also of making it a little bit different was so that we wouldn't do that. We just hadn't come up with the definite, you know, decision on it. But if that's what we decide to do, that we wanna go ahead and try this new way, then we could put word out there and there's still plenty of time for them to. Sign up. I just see a lot of.
Say, I'm not gonna be here.
I just see a lot of nodding.
Well, we talked about if we're gonna deliver them, when would we deliver them?
And that's what we talked about too, we could change it and move it out back a little bit.
Cause she's gonna be gone, I'm gonna be gone.
And you're gone till when?
Just on that Saturday.
Oh, just that Saturday and you as well, right?
Right. Okay, so they're changing too much?
If. But we're not really changing anything other than the fact that we're extending our timeframe. That's giving us more time. And if we moved it, the date back by one week. Then that gives the ones who thought that they weren't able to sign up because they weren't gonna be there to sign up.
So we're changing it till the twentieth, yeah.
We could do it on the twentieth, that would be the, the weekend before Christmas. If that's what you guys would like, think that it would work. You're looking, you're thinking.
Or, well, I don't have my schedules.
Oh.
I can't, and I don't know my schedules right now, with December yet. I'm traveling that once a month at this point, right around this time.
I'm sure you can help in a different way. How many wanted, want the new change and how many wanna keep, so who wants to, show a hand, who wants to do it? The traditional way at the town community building on the thirteenth. As we have already put out there.
I think my only thought is because it's already out there and there's families that are already kind of, and it's to the back of their mind.
So like I said, show a hand of who wants to keep it. One, two.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with keeping it, I just feel bad because I won't be there.
I think. It's something to consider in the future, but for this year, we haven't put enough pre-planning into it.
Okay.
Is my thought.
But it would be a good thing for next year, cause then like that, then we put the word out going, hey, here's what we're gonna do.
So here's my second question, so then how many of yous does that leave me with for that day?
Oh, I'll be here.
One, two, three, four, okay, so only two of you, okay.
I have it all on the schedule, everything's planned out for shopping, wrapping, everything.
Two, okay.
Yeah, when are we gonna shop for this?
We're gonna shop the sixth.
The sixth, okay.
Saturday the sixth from six AM, we, uh, when we get done.
But we, we're doing Sunday.
Sunday was wrapping.
Wrapping with Sunday.
No, we're doing both.
Yeah.
On Saturday.
Wrapping, shopping.
Normally, we shop and then we wrap.
Oh, I put it on the calendar, Saturday the sixth.
So are we doing it then Sunday?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and then you have an, an appointment?
I, yeah, so I can come and shop first thing in the morning, I just have to be at my office by nine thirty.
Okay, so we're shopping Saturday?
And then Sunday at seven, I can come help wrap, if that's where you're talking about doing wrapping on Sunday?
No, we usually do it in one day, we, one shop.
One day.
That's what I, that's what I thought, but she just said something about Sunday.
Shop and.
No.
She, she.
Starting at six AM on Saturday the sixth, okay.
Okay, yeah. Cause I thought we were gonna have a little break in between.
It depends, if Buck is not working, I will.
Yeah, we were gonna have, so yes, I have shopping at.
Six AM.
Six AM and then we were gonna come back um, after.
Saturday the sixth.
Saturday at noon. Is what I have on my phone.
I'll shop, but I can't.
Do lunch, or not lunch.
We'll save some for you.
Lunch will be included, but, okay, so that's settled then. Anything else to add to the Christmas party?
When are we gonna decorate the? The, yeah, the building or whatever.
Mike's got all of that.
Before the party.
Like that morning or whatever?
Yeah, I was helping Mike last year.
Can you and the guys do that?
Night before.
Just smile and say yes.
Come on, Michael.
We did help him last year.
We did, we did the lights.
And we did help him put the lights.
The lights and the Christmas trees, but as far as the other, um. Uh, what do you call it?
We did, oh, we did do it the night before, remember, we went down the night before to make them. And put the reindeers and the lights and everything up.
I don't think we should do it the night, oh, the night before the party, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. It's like, that's the same, so we can. So Friday the twelfth?
Decorate.
Are you guys, are, you won't be there for the twelfth?
Twelfth, I can probably.
To decorate?
To decorate, because my dad's deal is just Saturday this year.
Okay.
On Saturday.
I don't know you until Saturday morning.
Saturday night for kids to stay.
Okay.
Graham can't stay tonight, but.
All right, then, then that works. Um, six o'clock probably. So decorating at six on the twelfth. Do we have any new business? Yes.
So you guys, when this kid, when we comes, Rolando wants to talk to you about some.
No, we did public comments at the very beginning.
But any. No, okay, that's fine.
Jump up and say you wanted to talk.
If you can approach the podium and state your name for the record, please. Name and address.
Rolando Ramos, I'm at a, do a little bit of bosom shake. So I'm, uh, came here to offer my detailed service. I mean, I need some ready tools at first, ready for you guys. So I usually do like a monthly, monthly maintenance or, you know, either weekly or two weeks. Um, just want to see if you guys would be interested in getting your guys' uh, the cop cars detailed. So for monthly, I mean, you do inside and outside, okay? Nothing crazy like, you know, getting deep into it. It's just, you know, using your wife.
Basic.
Yeah, basic. So that runs about a hundred bucks a car. And, uh, I mean, usually, you know, I have a couple of contracts, might not have a contract up in, uh, brush. And we have base seventy cars, I do a hundred bucks a car.
Would you mind, um, uh, giving us a, your, a proposal on that so that we can look, a written one? And then we can put it on our agenda for, um, next month?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Josie, go to the end base.
You can email it or you can drop it off at the, at the office. Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time. Sorry about that.
You did say you did anything outside of the vehicle? Yes.
If it drives, he does it.
Yeah, he, he will.
Does anybody have any other new business? Mike?
Uh, just wanted to make you guys aware, again, a town employee that became a daddy.
And we did nothing for him or for them.
Oh, did they have a baby?
Yeah, last Monday.
A baby girl?
Wellness liaison, you should have came to us.
I know.
Fired.
So what would we like to do for Brett and his wife?
I think we should just go get a big laundry basket and get some onesies and diapers and wipes.
Okay, can I do that? I need a baby fix, so.
Okay. All the fun stuff.
Yes, that's me.
Yeah, but can you sign all of our names to it?
I guess, I guess. Now, I'll, I'll pick up a card and then I'll let you guys know to stop by and sign it.
A girl, is that what you said?
Yes.
Meadow May?
Meadow.
Meadow.
Meadow May?
Meadow May.
She looks like her mom, that's all I can.
She is a cutie.
So, yeah, he's very proud daddy. Um. Anything else? No? Okay. If I can get a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-four PM.
I'll second. Naomi?
Yes.
Deli?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Cajun?
Yes.
Josie?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Angie?
Excuse me, yes.
Okay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.